Welcome to the March 14th City Council meeting. Please stand and salute the flag.
Roll of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Fiori.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo is absent. Councilor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Councilor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Council President Visconti.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of February 28th.
So moved.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number three.
Yes, if we can, if I can take a moment, Council Serino would like to do, like to have a moment of personal privilege.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I really am getting tired of having to do these moments of personal privilege for moments of silence, but our community continues to lose wonderful people. A couple of weeks ago, we lost Mrs. Donna Sherman, who some may remember was the Cubmaster of the Cub Scout Pack at St. Mary's Church and St. Anthony's Church, and then at the American Legion. She was the Cubmaster of PAC-15. And she was the beloved wife of Jim Sherman and the mom of Jimmy Sherman. And what made Donna so special, in addition to being a nurse and just being a compassionate woman, she served Revere as the Cubmaster, was the Cubmaster even after her son aged out of Cub Scouts, and she remained so that the kids of Revere could have a Cub Scout Pack until another family was able to take over years later. I think she was the Cubmaster for close to 20 years between St. Mary's, St. Anthony's, and the American Legion. So we just, we want to, I just want to have a moment of silence because she was such a force in our community for our youth. I would ask that we stand. Thank you.
Next item.
Next items, calendar item number three. This is a motion presented by Councilor Keefe that the City Council award certificates of merit to Donald Boudreau, Keith Carrera, Officer Brian Brenness, Officer Joseph Inter Nicola, and Ladder Two, Acting Captain Kevin O'Hara, Firefighter Chuck Del Greco, and Firefighter Brian Champoli for their life-saving efforts at a recent high school basketball game.
Mr. President, if I may, and to the audience, if I could just tell a quick little story, and I know that there's a special man in the audience as well tonight that I'm certain will have something to say about it. But on February 7th, Councilor Cogliandro was recognizing a group of food pantry volunteers to come up to the council chambers for their work distributing food to the veterans and the members of our community. One of my good friends, Donald Boudreau, was not in attendance, and I think I messaged him and said, hey, you're being rewarded tonight, a citation for your work within the community. And he said, hey, I have my son's basketball game, and as we all know, as parents, those are really important. So rather than receiving the recognition, he decided it was probably better off to go to his son's basketball game. I'm a big believer in right place, right time, divine intervention, whatever you may call it. As the junior varsity basketball game was coming to an end, it went into overtime. Donnie, we call him Donnie Come Lately, because he's always just a hair late, of course, would not have made it on time for the varsity game, but started to walk in just as the junior varsity overtime was beginning. And there was a referee that was refereeing the junior varsity game, the Revere versus Lynn English, and he collapsed. He's, I believe, is in the audience this evening. Donnie's wife, Stacy, Mr. Smith, Donnie's wife Stacy, who also works at the Lighthouse Nursing Home, alerted Donnie. Many people in the crowd were obviously nervous to see a person on the ground, alerted Donnie, alerted trainer Keith Correa, who's always at the games, taking care of our athletes and, of course, our fans in attendance and the referees. And they began working on this gentleman immediately. In came SROs, Joe Inter Nicola and Brian Breenes, Officer Brian Breenes, Sergeant Inter Nicola, who came in to make sure that not only was the referee being attended to, but that everyone was doing what they were supposed to do in the crowd, contacting the 911. Shortly after, the trainer and Don, who happens to be a nurse as well, were working on this gentleman, we were able, it was nice to see that Ladder Two responded very quickly. I mean, I think that the saying was, it felt like it was 30 seconds. Ladder Two responded, Acting Captain Kevin O'Hara, Firefighter Chuck Del Greco, and Brian Champoli then took over. I'm happy to say, as mentioned, Mr. Smith, who was unresponsive for some time, is here with us today, over a month later. And I know that Mr. Smith has contacted a number of the people that were involved, and like most of them, firefighters, police officers, nurses, these people that we all do look up as, to as heroes in our community, especially over the last few years, really weren't looking for any recognition. And I know that none of them, they'd be happy to just go along their day, but I thought it was really important to bring them up in front of the community to let them know how important they are to us. But I, and you know, I do want to bring up the point that it's no coincidence I'm saying these names, Keith Correa, trainer at the high school, Don Boudreau, Ryan Breenes, Joe Inter Nicola, Kevin O'Hara, Firefighter Del Greco, and Firefighter Champoli. They're all, I mean, I hate to say this, it's no coincidence, they're all my friends. And you'll see us socializing at the games, you'll see us socializing at the park, you'll see us socializing with the children. They're all very strong members of our community, and they're probably friends with a lot of people out there as well. So it's not a coincidence that they were there, right time, right place, but they're always at the right place at the right time, always. And we can rely on these people in our community, so I just want to say thank you. I'll read, I'll read one citation, and I'm not sure if, if anyone up here wanted to speak, or if Mr. Smith, don't want to put you on the spot, if you had anything you wanted to say, you certainly have an opportunity. But I'll read one of these, and then I'll hand out the citations to the members. On Monday, February 7th, 2022, you saved the life of the referee who was having a heart attack at the Revere High School basketball game. Without hesitation, you jumped into action and began performing life-saving measures, which ultimately saved this man's life. Your actions will be forever remembered. And witness whereof, this certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed by the mayor and the City Council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 14th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2022, and at the Independence of the United States of America, 245th. Signed by the Revere City Council, Council President Visconti, offered by myself, and signed by Clerk Milne and Mayor Brian Arigo, Officer Brian Breenes. Officer Inter Nicola. Sergeant Inter Nicola. Acting Captain O'Hara. Firefighter Chuck Del Greco. Firefighter Brian Champoli. My friend, my very good friend, Donald Boudreau. And I don't even have to read it, but my other very good friend, trainer Keith Correa.
Anyone? Anyone? Kevin? Come on up. And then they would like to get a picture.
Yes. This one?
Yep.
On behalf of myself, Lieutenant Kevin O'Hara, Firefighter Chuck Del Greco, and Brian Champoli in the Revere Police Department, I would like to thank Council Keefe, the City Council, and the mayor for this certificate of merit. We are humbled by your recognition. Saving a life is performing our job at the highest level. This, however, is not unique to this event. This is what we do, day in and day out, in the fire service and the police service. So again, we humbly thank you to all my brothers and sisters, firefighter first responders and police officers. Your training experience is a tribute to your professionalism, and we share this honor with you. Stay safe.
Yeah, scooch in.
Ira would like to say.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Ira would like to say.
I'll do it from right here, you know. As, I was a basketball official for 35 years during high school, boys and girls, and college basketball. And thank God, I went through every game without any incidents. But knowing the health that you have to be, they have to be kept in doing, officiating a game, and knowing that you have guys like this behind the scenes to help in case anything happened. So as a official of IBO-27, I want to thank you guys and continue your good work, and good luck to you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. President, as you're taking photos. Having been a nurse for well over 25 years, and actually haven't worked with Donnie Boudreau over there, I can tell you, Mr. Smith, you're a miracle. Very, very really, do you have someone that go into cardiac arrest and make it home? Never mind come to a council meeting where the people that saved you are here to thank and be thanked. You are truly a miracle, sir. It is a very, very high testament to the quality of service that you all provided him that day, that he's able to be here tonight. Excellent work, guys. Excellent work. Back to the order of business. We have a request for a suspension of rules. Taking up item number 27, if I have no, no objections.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Councilor Silvestri that the mayor investigate the feasibility of including a line item in the fiscal year 2023 budget for additional funding for school resource officers in Revere public schools for the purpose of supporting and identifying students struggling with mental health issues.
Councilor Silvestri.
Yes, Council President, thank you. So as we know, these past couple of years have been a major challenge for everyone. Going over some of the, the statistics put out by the Disease Control and Prevention, 31% of adolescents through the ages 12 to 17, it's raised 31% visits to the ER for suicide, suspected suicidal ideations or attempts, compared to this time in 2020, from March, in, from February, March of 2020 till now, it's gone up 51% in females ages 12 to 17. 140,000 children in the United States have lost either one or two parents to COVID-19, and it's impacted hugely and disproportionately children of color. Our teachers, our school staff, and our safety officers are doing a great job in our schools, and I can commend them for what they're added to their plate besides teaching our students. They're becoming mental health professionals as well. And the motion is to ask that the, the mayor look into the feasibility of adding funding to our school resource officers in helping them identify and at-risk and high-risk students with mental health challenges. Diagnosed with post-traumatic stress, myself, the mental health challenges in the past two years have been a very tough two years on me, myself. And the, the backlog, the outreach, and the lack of, of support in our system, our healthcare system is showing now, and it's, it's screaming in our classrooms. The COVID-19 is starting to disperse and subside, but the mental health of our students and children are going to be around for several years to come. Thank you.
Any comments? Council Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be very much in favor of this motion, but I did want to put out, I did want to bring up a few points that fall in line with Council Silvestri's wants, just like I do. This last, the last few years have certainly been very difficult for a lot of, a lot of children, especially the impact probably will not be seen for years to come. But just recently, there was some awareness raised at the Revere High School, more specifically the school system and the, the resources that are offered currently. And they did, the high school and the principal and the school department did a really nice job of hosting a forum on Wednesday evening in conjunction with SUDI, people from Revere KIA's and some of the SROs. And I will say, as a parent of a high school student, one just graduated and one that's currently enrolled, there, there are an unbelievable amount of advocates at the school, and there are people that specialize in many different areas revolving mental health and addiction and you name it, things that kids, children are having problems with. I do believe, as a community, and as parents, more specifically in guardians, we have to do a better job of being more inquisitive and getting that information and asking for that information, because I don't think that it's something that, it just, it doesn't, nothing comes home in the bookbags anymore. And it's very, there's so much communication out there that things do get lost in translation. And one of the biggest pieces that Principal Perella mentioned was he said oftentimes when kids go to high school, parents go, you know, let's let them be free. This is an opportunity for them to grow. This is an opportunity for them to, to spread their wings. And he mentioned that more often, those are the kids that need to have more parental involvement, because those are the times in their lives when the exposure to more dangerous substances in their life becomes more apparent. So I would just want to put a message out there to parents, kids in middle school, kids in, in high school, dig in a little bit more if you can, and I know that it's not easy. There's a lot of single-parent households out there, and I know that there's a lot of multiple working families out there with dad and mom are working two jobs to make ends meet. So I know it's not easy. I'm a parent, I know that. But I think that it's important that everyone digs in a little bit more, and if you can't, try to get someone to help with your family that they can dig in, because yes, I would be in favor of many more resources at the school, but there's a lot right now, and they, I do believe that they're being underutilized. So I'd like to, I'd like to see everyone jump in and use them. That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? If I can weigh in on this, I couldn't agree more with Council Keefe and Council Silvestri. As a parent myself, who has two in high school and obviously another two eventually getting there, these are the critical years in the growth of our children, and where they can take a left turn very quickly. And it could be forever, their, their careers, their life can, can be shattered in a, in a quick turn. So yes, like Council Keefe said, as parents, taking more initiative and getting more involved in what's going on in your child's high school career is important. I know my kids don't like it, but my wife and I are on them all the time. We want to give them some latitude, but we also want to know what's going on. So I want to commend the motion, and I support that as well. Thank you. If there are no other comments, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered. While we are under suspension of rules, if the council has no objection, we would like to take item number 25. Thank you.
Motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the mayor be requested to set up a fundraiser through Revere's website for individuals to donate and show support for displaced Ukrainian refugees due to the current crisis.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was brought to my attention today, there is a link on the city's website that we've partnered with a foundation. But personally, I'd like to see something, you know, just, just for, from Revere set up on the site. So, you know, this town is very resilient, and I've seen its people come together many times. And, you know, I just like, like us to be able to control where we send the money, who it's sent to, things like that. That's it. And I know there's some people in the audience here that are wishing to speak on this motion. So, thank you.
Council Rotundo.
Thank you very much. What is happening in Ukraine is sanctum at a war crime. But that said, one way that we can help those in Ukraine, if you have an Airbnb account, you can actually pay for whatever property that you wish to go to, not go, and that family will be able to reap that money. It's something that I've done, it's something that I think that other people are doing, and I would invite people to do so, so that way you actually know it's going to a family who actually has that money in hand. Leave, Keefe, Kerson, Maripol, all those communities, in particular now Maripol, are experiencing a great amount of bombardment. They're basically just using artillery to attack the civilian population, and it's horrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming up with this idea. I've had many people reach out to me on Facebook saying, where can we donate? Where can we give money? And right now, there's a lot of bogus websites on there. So it's, it's really nice to know that Revere can do this, and we know where our money's going to, and we can help the Ukrainians. So thank you very much for coming up with this idea.
Council Morbido.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, people from all over the world are showing support for Ukrainians. I think it's very important that we initialize some kind of fund that people can contribute to, because, oh, I think we're at 2.8 million refugees have left. to, because, oh, I think we're at 2.8 million refugees have left Ukraine. Well, some of them, their husband and stay to battle, and their kids. And they're fighting for democracy, and it's the fundamentals of democracy that they're fighting for. And that's what America is. America is about democracy, and I think here in the city of Revere, we need to do what we can to help the Ukrainians. So, thank you.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the clerk. When I submitted this motion, I forgot to add Counselor Sylvester to it. I don't know if that's possible to do at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Would you object to have the entire council on it?
No objection, no.
Thank you for that. If there are no other counselors, we have a resident that would like to speak. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi. My name's Alexandra Desmond, and I am from 106 Endicott Avenue, Revere. And thank you, counsel, for listening to me. So I know that we have obviously already set up a fundraiser, which I was just notified about, but as many of you pointed out, it doesn't mean it directly goes to the Ukrainian people. Unfortunately, a lot of this funding will go to kind of third-party resources and things of that nature. So I know that there's actually a lot of local community organizations here in Massachusetts that are from also people who have immigrated from Ukraine and things of that nature that can help directly to the Ukrainian refugees, such as in Poland and other nearby European areas, or even, there's a lot of refugees here in the United States currently on TPS status because they can't get home right now. Their families are unfortunately currently stuck in Ukraine or in unknown areas. You know, you have college students, children, all types of things. I, myself, actually am an immigrant from the Soviet Union. I came in ninety-four. My grandmother is actually from Mariupol in Ukraine, and my grandfather's from Donetsk in Ukraine. During World War II, my grandmother had to flee, because we're Jewish, and we ended up moving to Moscow. Unfortunately, it wasn't any better there. My mom walking me to school, we would get threatened and, you know, wished that the school full of Jewish children would be burnt down. So we had come here, and as refugees on political asylum, and unfortunately, it wasn't very easy as a refugee. We had no money. We literally came with one suitcase between my grandmother, my brother, my mom, and myself. I had a backpack, and that was it. The clothes we got was from the Salvation Army. I had no toys. I had nothing. Unfortunately, I was in elementary school, and, you know, it was difficult to make friends, high school too. And unless you have children who come from the same, I guess, the same, you know, environment or whatever, it's hard to really register that with anybody else. So I think if we could maybe create some sort of additional fundraiser to support all types of, you know, organizations kind of within, it would really be more beneficial than just kind of like a UNICEF type of funding, because it really is difficult to say where people's money is going, and it's really nice. And my friend Lisa here, she actually was on the news in February, and I found her on Facebook, and she is a huge advocate for Ukrainians even before this whole system, this whole crisis happened. And she has great organizations and network and community, and she could really also help us and, you know, all of us. And so that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So hi, my name is Lisa.
Speak, name and address.
Okay, my name is Lisa, and I am at 395 Lee Burbank Highway, right on the ramp, guys. So I am relatively new resident of Revere, and I'm loving it. And I am also founder of Ukrainian Cultural Club. So unfortunately, my family had been bombed yesterday in Ukraine. There is no safe place up there. So that is really heartbreaking part. So what I wanted to say, I understand, and I do really appreciate, actually, the flag that you guys raised a few days ago was made in my house, because I believe we bought all Ukrainian flags of the Amazon, and we distributed in all of those rallies. So we had to make them to raise in the cities. So all the charities are doing really great work, but there is not that very many charities that do really targeted work toward the Ukraine. But if you see the amount of destruction and amount of trouble which the Ukrainian refugees right now, they flee in numbers you cannot even imagine. They had yesterday normal life with pets and cats and, you know, the pandemic and the life and whatever it is, and today they had to grab and run away. And there is few, I'm just going straight to the point, I'm trying to save your time. There is few charities that do very targeted help to the Ukrainians. They're all United States-based, some of them even Boston-based. One of them call Sunplauer of Peace. They're all 501-based, they're all tax deductible. You can all check, they're all documents, IRS approved, everything you can easily, easily prove. So I would recommend to donate to them, because they fly in daily to Ukraine, and they deliver meds and necessary supplies right away, exactly where they needed right away. Red Cross, UNICEF, all of those organizations, they're huge, and they're doing excellent job, but they're all over the world. And they're not exactly right away and very quickly. So if you could maybe possibly set up some kind of matching fund from the Revere City, that would be amazingly appreciated and very much by the Ukrainian community.
Thank you. Wait one moment. Counselor Sylvester.
Thank you, Counsel President, and Counselor Cogliandro, thank you for putting this motion forward, and I want to thank you for coming up today. War has an impact on a person that you don't understand unless you've been there, and you come back a different person, and that's going in knowing you're going to fight. I can only imagine what it would be like trying to be a resident of a neighborhood and having it bombed and tanks roll through it. So anything that we can do here as a council, or I can do to help you facilitate, please don't hesitate to reach out. I commend you and you for coming up and speaking on this motion, and whatever we can do to make sure things get directly to the residents of Ukraine, please don't hesitate. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you so very much. And maybe just to make it clear, I wanted to take one more minute of your time, because I made, I did my homework. Ukraine is the largest European country, and it's quite far away. So let's be realistic, there is not very many possibilities for Ukrainians, refugees to come here in really large numbers. First of all, it's far away. Secondly, there is no legal mechanism for the refugees to come here, because there is no exactly easy way to come here as refugees. Maybe there is some people who are here already on a tourist visa, they cannot come back or so. So to collect, let's say, clothes or some kind of supplies, it's really great deal, but it is not exactly a help for Ukrainians refugees who stuck somewhere in the border with Poland or Hungary. So let's say, you know, funds, money, or medication, or some kind of body protective gear would be way more needed at this point. So thank you very much.
If I, if I, oh, okay. If I may, I want to first say thank you for coming up. I also want to let you know that our hearts go out to all the Ukrainians and your family as well. It's amazing what families are enduring right now in that time, and it's, it's a travesty. I, you seem so knowledgeable in this, and I think it would be to the administration's benefit that we, that you help out in figuring out where is the best use of those funds. And I want to commend Counselor Cogliandro for this, but I think we could use your input in knowing what is needed on, and where to put the funds where it's best used, so.
I would be more than happy.
That would be something I think we can, would be appreciative of that and would benefit from. So I want to thank you for that. But Counsel Rotundo.
First and foremost, Takuyo. Second, the majority of the refugees are going through Poland, Moldavia, and Romania. I don't know if the Ukrainian Orthodox Church in Salem is running anything that's going to those Slavic countries, less Romania. The other thing I was thinking, and I just spoke to someone, that if we were to do anything as a city collectively, that we run it through the Veterans Affairs Office. And there are certain things that we'll be able to provide, and there will be other things that we will not be able to provide due to issues related to the State Department as well as Department of Defense. But I think afterwards, if you want to speak to people about how to do that, that would be great, because Poland is taking in the lodges of the Ukrainian refugees, so.
Thank you. Counselor Serino.
Mr. President, through you to Lita, thank you for coming up tonight and for sharing your experience, and to Ms. Desmond, too. And just a suggestion, Mr. President and Counselor Cogliandro, perhaps this could be similar to the Fire Relief Fund whereby it's not necessarily taxpayer dollars, but rather a separate fund set up that people in the city who wish to donate can make contributions to. Just a suggestion of how it could go.
Great suggestion.
Exactly. I'm sorry, Mr. President, that's exactly what I was thinking. Great job.
Great. All in favor, all opposed? Back to the regular order of business. Thank you.
Next up is the Public Works Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Public Works Subcommittee met earlier today, and there was an ordinance basically to change the put-out time of trash on the day before your trash pickup. And Counsel Rizzo originally wanted to do from April 1st to October 31st at 4:00 p.m., and then after that at seven, at 5:00 p.m. But I made a recommendation that instead of confusing people, to do it at 4:00 p.m. across the board year-round. And Counsel Maribito came up with a, an amendment, a substitute motion to make it 3:00 p.m. on the day before trash pickup. So, so year-round, the ordinance in Section 1, Placement of Trash for Curbside Collection, Section 8.06030D, time requirements for placement of trash would be 3:00 in the afternoon to allow for people to come home from work, and the ones that are at work don't have to take it out in the middle of the night. So that's the recommendation, that it be approved.
Any other counselors? Hearing and seeing none, we have Mr. Chico. Name and address for the record.
Ralph DeChico, Revere Commissioned Disabilities. Sorry I couldn't make it for that meeting. I just have one concern, not with the time, there's no problem, but do we have or can we add an end time for when barrels have to be put away? Reason being is, if anybody has seen any of the Commissioned Disabilities, we're having a lot of issues with barrels being placed after the pickup for a long period of time on the sidewalks, and it's causing a lot of issues with people with disabilities and elders being able to walk on the sidewalks, and the barrels are being left there. So I don't know, I wasn't able to see the ordinance. I always thought that barrels had to be placed by, away by 6:00 p.m. the day of the pickup, but if it is not, if that can be instituted, and we really need to try and take care of that, because it's causing a severe issue with, with the elderly community and with people with disabilities, that the barrels are being left there. I see that we want them out earlier for people, but they need to be left towards the end of the curb, but the issue is with them being taken back in.
Mr. President, if I may, through you to Ralph, right now, we're dealing with the times. This is another issue that we have to deal with, another set of ordinance changes, if it's necessary, we have to check with the ISD on the times. I thought it was 24 hours after, on the next day.
Yeah, well, that's going to be the issue then, if we're moving it from 3:00, if it's 24 hours. If it's, if it's the next day, it's 24 hours, because right now, if it's 5:00 to 5:00, then if you're moving it up from 3:00, then they would have to be put in at 3:00 in this, but there's people that are not home from work.
Yeah. But let me say, let me say, it's still a separate issue, and I think we ought to deal with it at that, you know, that way. Let's get this one done and get it out of the way. As far as the barrels being, we talked about it before, about Counselor McKenna was talking about people bringing barrels down and steps at 1:00 in the morning. You know, we live in a hill, but, and I mentioned that ISD has been very lenient for people that have steps, that have their barrels up a flight of stairs, so, and that they have allowed them to leave them down on the sidewalk against their building and the wall to still allow pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk. So that's something we'll have to deal with later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. DeChico, and just in general, I think requiring that the barrels be pulled back into people's driveways wherever they store them by 6:00 p.m. on the day of pickup, that presents a challenge. The average taxpayer isn't home until 5:30, 6:00 o'clock, if that. I know sometimes in our household, we don't get home until 7, 8:00 at night. So I think that's just a little out there to, to expect that every person in the city would be home by 6:00 p.m. I would say, and I think it would be unreasonable to expect that at night, the inspectors would be out. So perhaps 8:00 a.m. the next morning.
Exactly. That's what I'm looking for, yeah. We have people that are leaving there for two, three days, and that's the issue.
Yeah. Counselor Sylvester. Oh, no?
No, Counsel, Counsel Serino actually took the words out of my mouth. Thank you.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. DeChico. I agree with you. I've had problems with, especially like Bellingham Ave, where it's so tight and dense, and people leave their barrels, you know, on the sidewalk for days. So I agree with you. I don't think they should be left on the sidewalk. I mean, I have 15 stairs to go up to my level, not even my house, just the level, and we pick them, we bring them up and take them down all the time. I just had a problem with people taking them out at 1:00 in the morning and waking up the whole neighborhood. That's my, that was my problem. So I agree with you, they shouldn't be left on the sidewalks.
Thank you. Thank you for your leeway.
This is a ordinance amendment, so it's ordered on a second reading as amended. Ordered on a third reading and final, third and final reading as amended. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance amending the time requirements for the placement of trash for curbside collection as amended? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiore.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Maribito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent. Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sylvester.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Viscotti.
Yes.
Yes, this ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Mr. President, the second item we had was 22057, an ordinance further amending, revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to drain layers. And basically, the committee had a discussion, and Mr. Caramello and Mr. Argenzio were here to discuss it. And basically, what they want to do is, they want the total approval of drain layers rather than going through another step of coming through the city council. And they feel that they have a better feeling of everything and better control of the drain layers when that happens. So the committee approved it and willing to make the recommendation to accept these city. revised city ordinances. Thank you.
Do we have any comments from the counselors?
I'm going to object to the second reading this evening.
Okay. Uh-huh. We're going to table that?
Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we had nine new appointments and I believe 20, 24 reappointments. And given where we've had so many people that were voted out unanimously by the Subcommittee, I would ask that we take one roll call for all members unless a member of the City Council objects. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have to recuse myself for one.
Okay. So let's take them up individually, how's that?
I mean, I have no problem taking up Elder Affairs and...
Take up the, the one that has to, he has to recuse himself?
Which one is that?
Which one is that?
Okay.
Excuse me?
I have to recuse myself from voting on the appointment of Mr. Tucker.
Okay.
He's married to my cousin.
Okay.
So if you want to take up, does Chairman Cogliandro want to take up everything except Michael Tucker's appointment and then do that?
Yes, why don't we do that? Why don't we take everyone except Michael Tucker, and then we'll take that one separate? How's that? Thank you.
On Counsel, on Counselor Cogliandro's Appointment Subcommittee Report. Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowoselski is absent. Counselor Rizzo is absent. Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fisgotti.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments as reported by Chairman Cogliandro have been confirmed. And on the appointment of Michael Tucker to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori is recused. Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowoselski is absent. Counselor Rizzo is absent. Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fisgotti.
Yes.
Yes, the appointment of Michael Tucker has been confirmed.
Counsel, we have one more in your committee. The one for, I believe, was communication from the mayor relative to special municipal employee status. We can take, if you don't object, we can take that up as well?
Yep, it was voted out unanimously in Subcommittee. Thank you.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council grant special municipal employee status to the Council on Elder Affairs? Counselor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fiori.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo is absent. Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fisgotti.
Yes.
Yes, the special municipal employee status has been granted. Next up for communications, calendar item number 18, communication from Attorney Evan James Palavis, 9 York Terrace, Lynn, Mass., on behalf of his client, Paul Faragamo, requesting that the City Council accept a land donation, map block and parcel 4-90-002, Revere Beach Parkway.
Good evening, my name is Evan Palavis, I represent Mr. Paul Faragamo. How's that? Better, all right, great, thank you. Again, my name is Evan Palavis, I represent Mr. Paul Faragamo. I was here back in November, Mr. Faragamo, last May, sent out a mass mailing to our neighbors and also to the city, saying that he was interested in either selling or donating his property. And at that point in time, the Conservation Commission unanimously accepted and approved the acceptance of the donation. I came here on November 8th of last year, and some issues were brought up, saying that they thought that the, the land had to be cleaned up, or look at Google Maps. I was unaware of these Google Map things, I'm sorry, I'm older, I don't know about these things. So I went in, I Google mapped my own house, and I discovered that the Google Map was like five or six years old with the last owner's cars parked in the driveway. So I don't believe that the Google Maps looked at that evening were indicative of the condition of the property. Anyway, that evening, it was sent to Ways and Means Committee. Here we are today, I'm asking that the, well, I'm going to step back for a moment. Mr. Faragamo, along with his, our land development experts, went back to the property. The property seems to be in fair, good condition. Mr. Faragamo was the one who actually developed the land up next to it, next to this property that we're suggesting that, or donating to the City of Lynn. To a person, each person, I'm sorry.
City of Revere.
I apologize.
That's okay.
To a person, each person in that development would like the land donated, accepted as a donation, rather than us seeking to either develop or put on some sort of cell tower. So at this point in time, I'm coming before the, this council, and I'm asking that the, this council now accept the land donation that Mr. Faragamo is offering. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
If I may, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. Counselor, I actually went down to the site today. The property is not in good condition, but it's not because it's deteriorated, because of trees, of course, but there is, I did see a shopping cart down there, I saw a lot of paper debris all over. Now, I don't want the City of Revere to take over property that's in poor condition, and I still have to talk to the neighbors, I haven't had a chance to do that, but I do plan on doing that, and I'm recommending that we put this in committee today in Counsel Sylvesteri's committee, Economic Development and Planning, so I can actually have a little meeting with the neighbors myself. You know, I'm not doubting you that you contacted them, but when you contacted them, you didn't contact myself to let me know that was, other than coming up to the City Council.
With all due respect, Counsel, and, this was put into committee on November 8th. We're here six months later, and nothing, you know, we moved forward, and if there's a shopping cart, it can be easily removed. This is wintertime, you and I both know that between debris being thrown out of people's cars, it litters the sides of all of our streets, our homes, we have to pick it up. However, with respect to downed trees or anything, you know, it is the wintertime, it's going to show these things, and the, upon spring, it regenerates as growth. And if we are to, in fact, then go and start cutting back vegetation and bringing down trees and what have you, at that point in time, we're going to have to, there are permits that we're going to have to contact the DEP and other town and state agencies.
Point of order.
State your point. So I'll say that, you can say it.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Sir, we don't have to take the land.
No, you don't, I want to vote, and that's all I'm asking for, is a vote.
Point of order. Hold on a second, okay? Okay, we decide if it's a vote, okay? That's first and foremost, okay? And we, we're going to let Counsel Nowoselski finish what he was saying, and then we can continue from there. How's that?
Thank you, Ms. President, and thank you, counselors, for your support. You know, sir, we've taken land before, but never land in this type of condition. Now, last, I think it was last year, there was a large storm, and some of the trees from your property that you own now actually fell over and broke the fences of those neighbors that you were talking about. Now, if that was a city, if that was city land, those people would probably never get their fences fixed. You know, the city would say, go do your own insurance company. And I don't care what time of year it is, whether there's vegetation or not, you know, that's not the issue. The issue right now is whether or not we want to accept it in the condition it's in, which I'm not happy with. And right now, I want to talk about it, and I want to discuss it with my people that vote for me and that live in my neighborhood. I don't live far from there. So you can do, say whatever you want, sir.
I understand that.
As far as I'm concerned, I want to put it in committee and talk about it further. I don't care if it happened last November.
I just wish you had done it last, last year, when you, it was put into committee, sir. You brought up the same objection.
That was not my committee to call.
Please address the chair, okay? Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, Lauren Arda here, okay? We're going to let Counsel Serino speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. You brought this before the Revere City Council on November 8th. Our council session ended like five weeks or six weeks later, so everything signed died. So it's not that it sat in committee, but it was referred to committee with only a few weeks left of the council, and there was still business that had to be taken care of. Perhaps you could have brought it forward before November 8th.
With respect to your statement, I was trying to, but there, what happened was, the Conservation Commissioner had stepped down, and there was some confusion with the conservation at that point in time with respect to letters and what have you. It was brought before this, Mr., I guess I have to address you, I'm sorry if I did. At that point in time, there was, there was issue with respect to getting the vote, how it was voted before the City Council.
I understand that, and you're absolutely correct, there was some problems with the conservation, but still, you know, with the fact that it was brought up in November, we didn't sit on it where it just side died because of time constraints. So it's been brought up, we welcome it back up, but we have some concerns, some counselors have some concerns, especially the ward counselor, okay, which is right in his ward. So he has some valid concerns he wants to take up before it's voted. Nonetheless, I think if, Counsel Fiori would like to...
Mr. President, Counsel Rotundo is right, we don't need to take the land. Secondly, I don't appreciate the way you spoke to Counsel Nowoselski. Thirdly, this city is not shy about going over and fining people for trash, paper on their lawn, if a trash barrel left open. So I suggest that we send the inspector down there tomorrow, might it be the health inspector, and take a look at the land, and issue the appropriate fines. And there's a book I once read, it's called How to Make Friends and Influence People, and that's not how you do it before the City Council, and I've sat in the court, and that's not the way you do it in the court, sir. And I'm not going to debate you, I'm going to ask the chair to take action on this at this time.
With all due respect, that was directed directly towards me, so I believe that I should have the opportunity to respond.
With all due respect, you should be given the same opportunity you've given my colleagues, sir. We're going to end this debate right now, and this is on the will of the council, this is going to get sent to Subcommittee Economic Development. Thank you.
With all, may I ask a question?
May I ask a question, Mr. Fisgotti?
Mr. President, suspension of rules?
May I ask a question?
Suspension of rules, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
May I?
Suspension of rules.
On verbal motion, per Counselors Fiori and Nowoselski's recommendation, we send Inspectional Services down to this property for inspection, and that a report be presented back to the council, a warning be provided to the landowner thereafter, if it isn't clean within the time requisite per our ordinances, fines be levied. Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor. All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Calendar item number 19, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Stephen F. Riordan to the Election Commission.
This is referred to appointments?
Calendar item number 20, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Deborah Frank to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. On to motions, calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of installing GPS in all city vehicles with the exemption of emergency workers and department heads, and as a cost alternative, just half the fleet.
Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the past, actually, I was told that it was removed due to cost. At this point, I would like to see that take place again, if not, half the fleet. I wish to put it in committee so that we can get some recommendations from the CFO, the mayor, and so forth.
What is the will of the council here, to send it to committee? Or we can vote on this? If there's no objection? Counsel Fiori.
I think there's a like motion that was sent to the Ways and Means Committee. I'm not going to suggest one way or the other, but if the maker of the motion wants to send it to the committee or vote on it, I have no problem with it.
Counsel Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, just reading a few of the motions in advance, I'd be happy to vote on it in committee or here, but I'm just kind of curious, what's the, what is the intention? Like, what's the, what's the net gain that we're looking for? Is it something that we suspect, or what's, what's the intention of the motion maker?
Can you, would you like to elaborate a little bit? No? Okay.
That's all I was just...
All right, I'd like to take the will of the council. Do you want to vote it, or send it to committee? Send it, we'll send it to committee? Okay, let's send this to, let's...
Mr. President, there's a like motion in Ways and Means, so I would suggest Ways and Means.
Send it to Ways and Means. Thank you.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor be requested to provide an accounting to the City Council of all city-owned phones and who the phones are assigned to, except for police and fire investigators.
Counsel Rotundo.
Mr. President, if it could go to committee, or we could have it speak for itself, either way.
Any comments? Okay, we're going to send this to committee as well, okay? Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor request the retirement board to provide the City Council with the future cost of retirement projected over the next five years, and how these monies are accrued by city employees.
Counsel Rotundo.
It speaks for itself. I would like to vote it up tonight if we could.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll take a roll call.
Roll call on the motion, Counsel Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fiori.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Nowoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rizzo is absent. Counsel Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sylvesteri.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Fisgotti.
Yes.
Yes, this motion has been approved.
Mr. President, motion suspend rules in order to...
Motion to suspend rules?
For reconsideration so that it does not prevail.
So reconsideration does not prevail? So ordered.
Fails, okay. Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor request the city solicitor to provide the City Council with the rules, regulations, and policy governing City of Revere personnel and a copy of all union contracts.
Counsel Rotundo.
It speaks for itself.
Any other counselors?
Mr. President, just a point.
Counsel Nowoselski.
Getting, you know, getting us all copies of all the union contracts, we've been given those, we have to vote on those, and I'm sure those are in the clerk's office and in our files, because we have to vote on all union contracts. So we, we already have them.
Okay.
So I would think that...
For you, Mr. President? Okay.
If there's HR, if you go to HR and get, we can get all the personnel policies and regulations, whatever you're looking for, I'm sure there's a handbook from the city.
Counsel Rotundo.
An email is simple as well.
Okay. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Next motion? Next motion?
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselor Fiori, that the mayor be directed to distribute chapter 90 funds equally between each of the six boards.
Counsel Fiori.
I think it's self-explanatory.
It is. I just assumed another comment from you, that's all. Counselor Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly appreciate Mr. Fiori's motion, and I will be in agreement of it. What I would ask is maybe if it could go on a three-year, or a two-year, or maybe a little bit of a longer period of time for an average, because you could have major areas being done that affect multiple wards, and it just, if you just go based on each year, you might not get the right projects done. Maybe there's a certain section in Ward Five that needs to be done that costs 150,000, and Ward Four only needs 50, but then two years later it flips. So I would say if we can, if it could work on a, would you be amenable to a rolling average of like three years?
I really don't know at this time, but I have, I have no, to make it equal.
So it's equal?
I got Avon Street in my ward getting done. There are more streets being done in Ward Four than Cardi has liver pills.
No wonder why he wants the average, huh?
No, no, he knows I'm kidding, but, no, it's no way. It's actually true.
Those were by national grid refunds.
But I would, I have no problem sending it to committee, because I'm sure there's financial questions.
Okay. Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is on my wish list, I really think it's a great motion. Thank you, Counselor Fiori, for putting this in. I know that some wards get more new streets than others, so this is on my wish list. Thank you.
Any other? Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Ms. President. Mr. President, you know, I have no problem with, you know, everything being equally supported, but you have to realize that every street in the city is surveyed, and we've got in the past color-coded maps of how bad some of the streets are. And I know the city tries to do, you know, community development tries to do the worst streets first, you know, but also we have to look at what's going on with water and sewer work and stuff like that, so if this goes into committee, that's fine, but no problem with the, with the motion itself, thank you.
I knew it was coming, Counselor, go ahead.
So do I, Counselor, I have them too.
Hit the mic, hit the mic.
The streets in my ward that look like a bomb went off, but...
We all have them, Counselor.
Having said that, there are streets in the city...
All right, go get them.
There are streets in the city you can ice skate on, then there's streets in the city where you can see the cobblestone. And frankly, Mr. President, the rate we're going with gas prices, we'll all be taking a horse and buggy, so there'll be no issue with cobblestone.
We all have them, Counselor, thank you.
Okay. Any, if I can make one comment on this, I know the chapter 90 money, if I'm not mistaken, is about 800, $900,000, doesn't service a whole lot of streets, when an average street is probably costing anywhere from 150 to 300,000, depending on the size. That's number one. Number two, I believe we, as a council, bonded $5 million, okay? I think it was $5 million, which I believe that's gonna be done over a three-to-five-year time span, so they're gonna be, and that, that's gonna spread over three, three to five, I think three years, from what I'm being told. So I think there's gonna be more money for more streets to be done, which I'm grateful for, and I look forward, I'm sure Counsel, Counsel McKenna and Counsel Fiori will be happy to see that done, because I believe as well that it should be spread out amongst the wards as well, and everybody gets a piece of the pie. So, we're gonna send this to committee, if that's the will of the council. You okay with that? Okay, we're gonna send it to Public Works. Okay?
Calendar item number 28, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the mayor direct the chief of police to have an officer present on Tuckerman Street during pickup at the Lincoln School in the interest of public safety. Folks picking up their children are double parking and blocking the driveways of residents on Tuckerman Street.
Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Myself and the Lincoln School staff have both received a lot of complaints about this issue. There is periodically an officer down at the intersection with the crossing guard, I've seen them less over the last couple of months or so. I did see one there the other day, but the problem lies with Tuckerman Street. Residents are having their driveways blocked, the double parking, it makes it very difficult to travel through that street. It is a safety issue for the children, and I'm hoping that, you know, maybe sending an officer there even just a little while is a deterrent for people to, you know, cause such congestion on Tuckerman Street. Thank you.
Any other question, any other comments from the councils?
If I may, Mr. President.
Sure. Counsel Novoselsky?
I thank you, actually, I know it's your neighborhood, but over the last month and a half, I've been having the same issues down at the Garfield School. And I've actually asked the parking department to send people down, and also the police department when they're blocking someone's driveway. You know, it's nice that the parents want to pick the kids up at school, but they don't have to be rude and block people's driveways, so they can't get out to pick up their kids, or come home with the kids, or with shopping, and have park a block and a half away to disperse everything. So, good luck to you, sir.
Mr. President, just one more point of information. I did speak to Director Babo about this issue, and he did state that he is for it. If anyone wanted to know the input from him, you know, again, secondhand information, but he was in favor of this motion. And I would ask to vote on it tonight. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Counsel President, there was just one late motion, that came in from Counselor Novoselsky, regarding a proclamation recognizing the Jewish War Veterans of Revere.
Can, can you read the proclamation into the record?
Whereas the Jewish War Veterans of the United States of America was established on March 15th, 1896, by Jewish Civil War veterans, and now enjoys membership ranging from World War II through all current conflicts and active-duty personnel. And whereas the Jewish War Veterans is the oldest continuously active veterans organization in the United States. And whereas the Jewish War Veterans was chartered by Congress on August 21st, 1984, under public law 98-391, is a patriotic wartime veterans organization. And whereas records of Jewish soldiers fought bravely and died heroically in every war and conflict in this nation has participated. And whereas the Jewish War Veterans promotes the welfare and special needs of all veterans, fostering Americanism and patriotism, combating anti-Semitism, encourages the doctrine of universal liberty, equal rights, and full justice to all races and genders. And whereas the Jewish War Veterans are celebrating their 126th anniversary on March 15th, 2022. And whereas today, we honor those of the Jewish faith who have served in wars of the United States of America and humbly risked their lives to protect us all. Now therefore, we, the Revere City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of March 13th to March 19th, 2022, as Jewish War Veterans Week.
Any comments?
If I may, Mr. President. Mr. President, as a 27-year career military person, along being a military person with Counselor Silvestri, Counsel Rotundo, Counsel Rizzo, it's always an honor to recognize any veterans organization, especially one that has a history as the Jewish War Veterans. The Jewish War Veterans are older than Revere Beach, having been established in March of 1996. And it's important that we recognize all of us, of all religions, all creeds, all races, being diverse and inclusive. And I'm proud to have been a past national commander, or that I am a past national commander of the Jewish War Veterans, having been the leader of that organization worldwide. And I was proud during the 2008, 2009 years that I did that job. And I still did it as a member of the Revere City Council, as I may say. But I'm proud to be a Jewish War Veteran, a member of the organization, and I'm proud to be a veteran, and recognized by the federal government, and we move on from there. So, thank you very much, and happy anniversary to all our Jewish War Veterans in Revere. And just so you know, the Revere post, which arrays the Jewish War Veterans in Revere, is this year 85 years old, being established in 1937, after the original organization was established. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. That being said, I believe before we adjourn, Counselor Keefe would like a moment of, point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind the residents of Revere, in tradition with many of the flag raisins, this Thursday at 4:00 PM on the City Hall One, there will be the Irish flag raising in honor of St. Patrick's Day. So, hope all of our Irish brethren out there in Revere, I'm wearing a green tie for our representation tonight, and I hope to see people there on Thursday at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Counsel Cogliandro?
Thank you, Counsel President. Just really quickly, everyone, on March 26th, it's a Saturday, between 9:00 and 1:00 PM, Revere Karate Academy is celebrating its 42nd year being in business, and I'd like to invite all of you to just stop by, talk to everybody, introduce yourselves, and if you're lucky, I'll let you have some cake.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we adjourn, I would just like to remind, the zoning subcommittee will be held on March 21st, so I wanted, huh? Is that, I believe there's only one... Legislative, yes, and has been rescheduled. So, with that being said, this concludes the March 14th City Council meeting. I believe the next meeting will be held on March 28th. Thank you, have a good evening.